Nick Sonnen or somebody in the department to take all their flower baskets down and we benefited because we had these two huge flower baskets because they needed a place to store.
Five.
What's that?
Two minutes.
Two minutes. Oh, it is. I heard the recording.
You guys, good choice for dinner.
Yes, that was good.
Yeah, it's my favorite restaurant in town.
Nice.
What restaurant was that?
Cheese shop.
If you're.
Ever been? The best sandwiches in town.
What do you usually get?
Oh, the cheese shop.
The cheese shop.
In, in, oh, yeah, I know that. I do like that place.
Yeah, yeah.
Jack. Testing. Yeah, sure enough there. So I think it's.
I mix it up. Adrian. It's called the, uh, something bird without the bird. She's so busy a cheese sandwich.
Shouldn't it be on this? Seems appropriate.
Yeah.
Like through the zoom. We might have something to talk. So should I click this? Sorry, audio did something weird when the, I don't know if you heard the recording in progress didn't come over the main speakers. It came out of this.
Okay.
Box.
If you get that fixed before we get going.
And last, I think we're set now. Hopefully. But separate.
So it's five thirty and I will call the planning commission meeting for Tuesday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five to order. Uh, can we have a roll call, please, Chris?
Ms. Proper.
Yeah.
Here, Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Garrett.
Here.
Ms. Gort.
Here.
Mr. Fetter.
Yes, here.
Thank you. Uh, planning commissions, any commissioners, any changes to the minutes? No, then the minutes will be as as they are. Uh, and Chris, any changes to the agenda tonight?
Um, we're removing, uh, the works or the, the work session related to, um, variance request for employee mitigation. That'll be postponed till the, the next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, with that, I'm gonna open the meeting to public comment on historic preservation issues that are not on the agenda this evening. As part of a certified local government, we are asked to take public comment on historic preservation issues in the community. And with that, I will open the meeting to any public comment. Please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen or press star nine if you're attending the meeting by phone and then star six to unmute yourself. And we will start with anybody who may be online.
No one online.
All right, anybody in the audience wish to comment on historic preservation issues? No, then we will close that part of the meeting. We don't have a consent calendar today, so we'll move on to the runway subdivision town project hearing, PL twenty twenty-five zero one seven zero. Sarah?
All right. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Pull up the. All right, so tonight for your recommendation to town council, we have a town project hearing for the runway subdivision. This is a re-subdivision of the existing tract A fraction subdivision and tract C block eleven of the Breckenridge Airport subdivision. So currently, um, what's out there is two, two separate lots, both owned by the town of Breckenridge. And the proposal would be to re-subdivide to create the runway subdivision, um, tra- five different tracks, A through E, and dedicate the public right of way, which was an extension of the existing Floridora Drive. The area covers about twenty-five acres and it's located at fifty-one Fraction Road, um, which enters the site approximately here. So this re-subdivision is pursuant to the master plan, which you recommended through a separate town project back in May and town council approved that master plan for the runway subdivision on May thirteenth. What this. This subdivision, um, essentially allows the town to convey these lots to the developer for the future construction of the master planned, um, residential units on that lot, on the, on these tracks. There will be future subdivisions at the staff level to establish the footprint lots for each of those, um, units once they're constructed. And this is really similar to the process that we just went through for Stables Village a couple of years ago. So make this fairly quick and painless, I think. Um, I'll go through how the subdivision meets the master plan and also how it meets the, um, applicable portions of the subdivision code. And then there'll be opportunity for any questions. So as I mentioned, um, the subdivision establishes this public right of way and dedicates that to the town. And this is an extension of. It is, um, this kind of meandering shape and that is in alignment with the master plan. So you can see the proposal on the master plan that we already approved. And we've got essentially the same alignment here on the proposed, um, re-subdivision. Tract E will be maintained by the town for governmental uses. And this is, um, equivalent to the planning area B that was on the master plan. The master plan also, um, part of the constriction for the road alignment and the location of it was due to these existing utility easements. There's the sanitary sewer easement that kind of diagonals the site and a gas utility easement, um, along the eastern perimeter. Um, these are existing and they're not changing and they couldn't be changed. Um, so that is why we have the roadway alignment that we do, um, and those easements are carried forward on this new plat. Right now, out there, um, if, I'm sure all of you have seen the site from highway nine, visited it. It's very flat. It's been graded that way since the seventies. Um, there's pretty much zero vegetation as well. So a flat landscape, um, very, uh, partially sloping downhill to the north topography, but significantly devoid of vegetation. Um, so under the design compatible with natural features section of the subdivision code, there's not a lot to look out for there, um, because it's such a flat site. Future subdivisions, once the alleyways, um, footprint lots and, um, necessary drainage elements for those, um, developments are constructed, the future subdivision plat will have drainage easements additionally applied. Um, and those will be reviewed by engineering on subsequent, um, replats. See. Do you want to touch on lot dimensions because, and, um, shape, the shape of lots? This has been a, a sticking point in the past where, um, council members wanted to see square lots with quadrilateral, real, quadrilateral sides and, um, plain geometric shapes. There is an exception in the lot dimension section that says, um, a proposed subdivision is generally consistent with a vested master plan that displays lot lines. Um, then the lot lines don't have to be those plain geometric shapes. And since the master plan establishes that curvilinear roadway, um, of course, tracks A through E are not not going to be plain geometric shapes. They're gonna have curves and, and they do. But the section of the subdivision code does allow for that. Let's see. Regarding pedestrian and bicycle circulation, we're not proposing any additional pedestrian easements on this plat, but the fifty-foot right of way for Floridora Drive does include the western sidewalks that'll be, um, implemented when the roadway goes through. Street lighting and traffic control signage, um, and the future subdivision monuments and naming signage, those are all part of the agreement with the developer that the town has. And those will be, um, purchased and installed by the developer. Um, so while they're part of the subdivision code, those will be covered through the develop, uh, development agreement with, through the future RFP that gets, uh, approved by council. I also want to touch on open space quickly. Um, these two parcels that exist out there now, those are both previous subdivisions, which had the open space requirement applied to them. Um, so there's not a need to further require a dedication of open space. Um, so that's not reflected on the plat here. Um, when the master plan is implemented, there will be ample open space as is prescribed in the master plan. Um, I think it's a thirty-three percent or greater, um, that's accounted for in the master plan. And then each site specific lot will also be considered for open space. Um, so that's how we'll meet that requirement. I think that's all the important points that I wanted to hit. Like I said, very quick and, um, the, this plat is very much a formality, so like the town can do the conveyance to the developer. Um, I'm happy to take any questions, but staff does recommend that you recommend two town council approval tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate it. Okay, so since, um, since staff is also the applicant, we'll just condense all our questions at one time to Sarah and then move on to public comments. Okay? So Alan, any questions?
Um, just want if, uh, considering the amount of, uh, families, I expect that certain times of the day, there might be a lot of traffic going in and out. Is there any thought to possible, uh, traffic lights at either fraction or where Floridora is gonna come out in the south end or at least laying out the road? So if a traffic control device had to be put in, it would not require a lot of future construction?
I, I don't think that. I guess, uh, the traffic at the volume it would necessitate, the traffic light is really contemplated because comparing it to the existing conditions where we have up to thirteen hundred cars parked that that happened to Ingrass and Egrass at probably a much more concentrated period. Um, we expect throughout the day there to be significantly less traffic overall with a fully built out neighborhood than the existing condition. But, um, that was actually a question I think that we raised, uh, as planning staff to the engineering team at, um, one of our agenda meetings and they, and they, I think, uh, I forget if it was housing or engineering did talk about like a traffic study and really, um, kind of the, the differences in, in traffic. But in full, in full disclosure, we had the same question.
Okay, all right.
They are completing new updated traffic studies as a C DART requirement with this development. So if, if it's indicated that those are necessary, then it would certainly be planned for. But Chris is right, the volume that's planned for now for traffic is not, um, we don't think it would rise the level of needing a signal.
All right. Thanks, Sarah. That was good. Um, I'll save my comment for later.
Okay.
I have a question about why the sidewalks on the western side of the road, when most of the people are gonna be living on the eastern side of the road. Seems like kids would be riding their bikes and trikes on that and having to cross the road to get to it.
That's where it was anticipated on the master plan. Um, so conceptual, certainly. Um, but I think part of the thought was, um, aligning with the west side and then it would be easier to connect, um, to the, uh, I guess it doesn't really matter, but connecting to the safe routes to school this direction to the south. But I see your point, west or, um.
I mean, I think the south or the east side of the road would be safer for going to school because you wouldn't have to cross the road again to get to school. I just know kids like to ride their bikes on their own and stuff and I would be worried if my kid had to cross that road if there's a lot of traffic, who knows? It looks like it's slowed down at least.
There are gonna be, um, some safe crossing points with crosswalks, so it won't be, you know, a, a jaywalk. I think another consideration is the existing bus route, which, which could change in the future, but the bus route that goes through Blue Fifty-two comes to the south, so having it on the west side makes sense for those bus stops.
So the bus stop would be on that side.
If I can comment on that, the neighborhoods are protective of their own kids. So like in Wellington, everyone is very careful driving through Wellington and, and because everyone's aware of their neighborhood's kids.
There's all those slow kid, little peoples. Okay, well, I think it'd be improved moving it to the other side, but I don't know all your factors.
We have a, a, a good answer to that. I, I do know that there was a lot of thought in terms of like the alignment of the roadway and other measures to try and have traffic calming. I think that was one of the things before even any of the layouts and different unit types, there's a really, um, lengthy discussion in terms.
Thinking like kids would, my kids, they would want to have a loop that they're doing. So if you could envision some way they would go through the neighborhood, it would be safer and not crossing so many times it might be.
Yeah, I think there will be some of those natural loops that will occur as the, um, the alleys and other things get, get built out.
All right. And then I had a question. We had a a, I guess, an email from Gail Marshall. She was talking about the traffic crossing Airport Road. I, I meant to go by there and look at it today. What is, there are not good crosswalks to cross Airport Road for people, pedestrians wanting um, from there or?
I couldn't venture to elaborate on her comments without her being here present to, to state what she meant. Uh, for her, I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay, it sounded like she wanted to cross the road to get to trails on the other side of Airport Road and it thinks that this is just gonna make more congestion. So my understanding is that she just gets in her car and drives somewhere to walk her dog. So anyway, something to think about for all the people who have dogs. Seems like there's great dog walking along the river.
Another point I, I do want to mention is in the future with subsequent subdivisions, as those alleyways and pedestrian connections are made, we will require plating easements for pedestrians that connect through from the alleys over to the river, most likely into the rec path and have those, um, those connections be recorded easements.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Sarah. Could you, uh, refresh my memory on what the access for the town, uh, snow storage or maintenance area is?
Like where through track E?
They would gain access to that? Is it through the neighborhood or from somewhere else?
Um, so it, right now, the thought is coming up through the south, probably, um, the first few parking spaces, which are over, um, the required amount of parking for Ulla Apartments. Those may be lost and then an entrance for track E would, uh, be located at this, uh, east side here.
Okay, so.
So they wouldn't go all the way through the neighborhood, but they may exit that way.
Just during heavy snow hauling times, that could create a lot of truck traffic through the neighborhood. That's, that's all. Thanks. Susan?
Thank you. Um, Sarah, by, uh, further subdividing this property, um, is that going to change the order or the pace of development in this area?
Um, can you rephrase that? I'm not sure I understand.
Um, well, before there was one big tract and then there was the, um, government portion.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I know there's been a lot of discussion at the council level about, um, how much to do right away and how much.
So like phase one versus phase two.
Yeah.
Um, I can speak to that a little bit. Um, so the council right now has approved going forward with phase one and that includes tracks C, D, and B. So C, D, and B, um, and then tract A is mostly phase two. So the current proposed development would be on this north side. As far as timing, I don't know that any of us can estimate, um, when a phase two may or may not, um, be approved by the council.
And, and would this allow more than one developer to develop this property ultimately?
Um, I think certainly the phase one would be the, is designed to go forward with the same developer. Um, and then there will probably be a future separate RFP to conduct phase two is what I'm thinking.
Maybe just a little clarification. The council has agreed to move forward with the infrastructure here.
That's true.
Um, and even in phase one, they still not have agreed on the vertical pricing, uh, for the project yet. So that's still being worked out.
Yeah. And I have, I understand that it has a lot to do with ADUs and whether they're built out and all of that kind of stuff.
That's one of the issues they've been discussing, but there's many of them.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Sarah.
Mike?
No questions. Thank you, Mike.
Mark?
Just for clarification, tonight, we are going to, um, move to ask the town council to approve this as just the subdivisions for track A through E and not the individual lots, which will be subdivided at a later time. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
That's all.
Um, thank you, Sarah. My one question is about the easements. Did we, um, vacate a couple of easements on this parcel?
Um, I don't think so. Do you have specific ones that you're?
I just thought there was more, so it's, it's, it's a really pertinent question, but I was curious.
No, not to my knowledge. Um.
No easements are you talking about?
Or any easement. Um, I thought that I just, my brain went, wasn't there more? But I didn't go back and look, so.
I mean, it's, it is very encumbered, but.
It is very encumbered. Okay, that's all the questions that I have.
So yeah, or Ethan, apologize. I, I think they may have reduced the sanitation easement. I think that was maybe quite a bit wider.
That what it was?
Yeah, I, and I think that was negotiated down. Um, don't hold me to it, but I believe, just looking at it, because I, I know that there was a lot of easement encumbrances and the, in the sand district easement in particular.
Yeah.
Um, was really wide. If you guys keep talking, I, I can maybe pull up one of the older plats and see if it.
If they did that, it's been since the master plan publication, but.
Okay, I think, I think it was done probably a while ago, leading into like thinking about developing the site.
Mostly a question about, out of curiosity. I think that's, that's an upper blue easement, correct?
It is.
Yes. Yes.
Is that upper blue and then, um, the upper blue is a fifty-foot and a thirty. No, they're Brex sanitations and they're a thirty and a fifty. And then the columns in, and gas along the edge, but that's, that was just out of curiosity. I don't have any other questions, so thank you, Sarah. Um, at this time, we'll open it for public comment. Please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen or press star nine if you're attending the meeting by phone and then star six to unmute yourself.
No one online.
Anybody in the audience wish to comment? Okay, great. Then we will move on to commissioner comments. Alan, I know you have some.
Uh, yes, just, um, I think just to address the public comments we have, uh, just to resp- uh, well, we don't have to respond, but I would just say, for any public, public commenters, our agenda today is just to approve the tracks, uh, not to approve the project, which already has been approved. And also this project was approved, our job is, again, I'll say again, as I always say, is to, uh, confirm that it meets code. And, uh, I would recommend any public comments that, uh, this was, this project was approved as a development agreement with the town. And, uh, and I would suggest public commentators take their comments to town council meetings. There's an opportunity at every town council meeting for that. That's all I got.
Thank you, Alan.
I have no comments, other than look at how like kids might ride their bikes around in circles, get to school. Yes, the mom.
Matt, any comments?
I have no comments. Thanks.
No comment.
Mike?
Uh, next logical step from the master plan, um, looks good.
Mark, any further comments?
Uh, it's consistent with the master plan, so I have no comments.
And I also have no comments. And so, Mr. Chair, I move that, um, the planning commission recommend approval to town council of the runway subdivision, PL twenty twenty-five dash zero one seven zero, creating tracks A through E located at fifty-one Fraction Road and with the attached findings and conditions.
A second.
Great, thank you. Can I get a roll call, please, Chris?
Absolutely. Ms. Gort.
Yes.
Ms. Proper.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Mr. Lees.
Yes.
Mr. Fetter.
Yes.
Mr. Giller.
Yes.
Great, thank you. And I believe that takes us to the town council update with Mark.
Thanks, Ethan. Okay, last week, uh, town council, just some highlights, um, they, uh, under planning matters, they discussed, uh, actually a planning of a trail, um, Aspen Alley. But, um, yeah, great trail. Um, there's some user conflict there, especially during the fall leaf peeping season. Essentially mid-September through early October. And so the BOSSAC, the Open Space Advisory Committee, had make, made a recommendation to the council, um, regarding, um, they've got an opportunity, the Forest Service has indicated you have an opportunity, if you want, to talk about directional trails or other solutions for managing that during that really busy fall leaf season. And, um, so anyway, the BOSSAC made a recommendation of, um, to consider, um, alternating days. So for example, odd days, you'd allow the hikers to go, even days, the, um, you'd, you'd allow the, um, bikers to go. And, uh, the thought process that that would avoid some of those conflicts of, you know, downhill bikers coming down and encountering the masses of hikers that are coming up the trail or, um, down the trail. So, um, anyway, um, that was forwarded to the council. The council thought about it a lot, um, considered it. They were a little concerned that it was for a short period of time that we were talking about implementing this. Um, there's also a plans in the works to do, uh, a new trail that will somewhat parallel the existing trail, but have enough separation, so you really can't tell it's there. Um, but, um, just for hikers only and possibly like biking uphill only. So, um, anyway, given that, the council was a little hesitant to move on the alternating days approach. Um, they were concerned that, you know, you've got people that come into town, it's mainly the hiking crew. They come up from Denver, wherever they're coming into town, this is their one day, they want to go hike Aspen Alley and boom, it's not available that day. And so, um, that was, um, one of the primary concerns that the council identified. So, um, after quite a bit of debate, because they really respected open space, um, the, the BOSSAC's recommendations on it, they decided to go with, um, um, just not doing that, not implementing the alternating days. What we are going to be doing is a bunch of outreach to people. Um, and, um, having staff available at the top and the bottom of the trail to kind of forewarn people. You know, hey, there's a whole bunch of hikers coming in this dir- you know, this direction to any bikers that happen to be coming down and vice versa at the bottom, you know? Hikers, you may encounter bikers, just be prepared. There's a few places on the trail, it's narrow and, you know. and vice versa at the bottom, you know, hikers, you may encounter bikers, just be prepared, there's a few places on the trail, it's narrow and, you know. So anyway, there's going to be a concerted outreach effort to try to reduce that conflict even more. And we'll see how that goes. We have to take this new trail proposal through a NEPA process with the US Forest Service. And as you know, the way they're staffed right now, it could be a while till we get an approval, or hopefully get approval. But anyway, we're already underway, we've hired SE Engineering to come in, and they've got biologists, et cetera, doing a review of the actual conditions out there, the habitat, et cetera. And so anyway, and we will be, and they will be submitting on our behalf that to the Forest Service sometime, probably late fall, and then it'll get in the queue and we'll see where it goes. But it's something we may have to deal with this fall, we may have another fall, we have to deal with this. Hopefully, we'll eventually get this new trail in, which will alleviate a lot of the issues up there. But I know, I'd bring that to your attention, because a lot of you probably have used it, some probably very frequently. It's a really nice trail.
Any idea if it's a categorical exclusion or environmental assessment?
Not yet, Mike, so we have to submit all the materials, and then that's one of the first things they'll do is Forest Service will make a determination on that.
Sure.
And so that will inform how much more information, but we're already providing a fair amount of information, you know, upfront. So that hopefully we're greasing the skids for getting this thing approved. So if any, some of you remember, I mean, there used to be an older alignment even, this one's only been there about maybe ten, twelve years, something like that. There used to be even an older one, which is very fall line in some places. So, but yeah, so anyway.
I don't like it.
What's that?
Like it, sounds good. Are they going to do anything, some of the turns are really hard for pedestrians, is there something the town could do to just make those easier for pedestrians during that time period? Those bank turns are really slick on the inside.
Yeah, we haven't had any discussions about that, but I can certainly talk with our trail staff about that, if that's something that
Get some extra time, go check it out.
Yeah, yeah, if that would help the situation a little bit, so, thanks. Yeah, that was the first thing. Second, Rick Fout, our building official, along with a couple other staff members, brought the energy code updates to the council. If you wanted, we could bring Rick in to kind of go over that stuff at one of your upcoming meetings, just to get more details. But basically, the new international energy conservation code is requiring some significant upgrades. And we need to move from twenty eighteen IECC to the twenty twenty-four. And so he's been doing a whole series of outreach meetings, six different public meetings. I know Mike's been at a couple of them, I don't know if you were there, Ethan?
I was up there one.
Yeah, so anyway, it's been, I think it's been a really good transparent process. Work that, you know, the design community and the builders are getting a chance to take a look at what's happening. But there's definitely going to be some changes coming here. And one of the things Rick's kind of proud of is they've came up with this idea of a pathway on a platter where basically, it's a prescriptive path where if you do all these things, you meet the requirements of the new twenty twenty-four code, as opposed to having to go into all these tables and figure it out all on your own. And it's, I think it's getting a lot of traction, even what we're hearing statewide is people are like that idea of kind of instead of just saying you need to adhere to this entire code, if you meet these pieces of it, you have got to that point, that threshold where you meet it. So anyway, and then the one thing we are doing is we're doing, we're calling it a larger platter for if homes are forty-five hundred square feet or larger, that they are going to require additional things in terms of energy conservation, things that they have to implement on their projects. And that was really part of an outshoot of Chris's conversations on neighborhood preservation where, you know, there's a concern about larger homes. Part of that concern was energy, energy use. And so, this is one way to address that, is requiring a little more of the larger homes. So, yeah, so anyway, that's underway, and that's, that was, they'll be having another work session next week on that. And then first and second readings in September to adopt that. And then there's a whole other slew of building codes. The international building code, residential code, commercial code, all those are going to be going up for adoption too by the end of the year. So, building apartments busy with all that, along with all the things that are going on in town in terms of inspections and
Did that, did that forty-five hundred number come out of the new code? Is that where that number came from? Coming up with it?
Yeah, it's kind of staff coming up with it, Mark, one of the reasons we tied in on that was the new codes require, requiring suppression systems for, you know, sprinkling. They, they're dropping from six thousand square feet down to probably forty-five hundred square feet. And so we're trying to create some consistencies.
So it'd be in alignment with that fire code for
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, and then we, and then we did have a discussion about runway neighborhood, but that was mainly the vertical pricing. And it quickly went into executive session with the council, they're looking at numbers and everything, and it's at some point, it'll all be public, but some of these things are having to have discussions about in private. They've hired third-party consultants just to, it's a big price tag for this runway project. And they're doing, you know, the council doing what I think they believe is due diligence and making sure that we're getting the best pricing we can, so we brought in third-party consultants to verify that we're getting a good price for the vertical construction. So that's my update.
Thank you, Mark.
Welcome.
Other matters that anyone would like to bring up tonight? Alright, with that, I will close the commission meeting for Tuesday, August nineteen, twenty twenty-five.